In D E I J. Where's the equity? Where's the inclusion? Where's the justice? There is none. The union is running the show.
That is actually not the case with this. The union ratified it and we voted on December 11. The office is going through all of it to make sure that they have everything accurate between the lawyers, the union, someone's posted.
Excuse me, did you speak up yet?
Yeah, sorry. They are going through the contract to make sure that the version that is posted is accurate with all of the updates and everything so that something is not posted that is inaccurate.
You can do that with a draft.
Um, they don't have that right now. December 11, it was on vacation.
You said you were gonna talk to somebody about this.
Yes.
Okay, at December. Who'd you talk to in the administration?
I talked to the local people over in Aspen. We talked to Renee while I was there. They are working on it.
And what law allows information to be given to even people that aren't even residents of East Kingston but are on the staff here? But the residents don't get the information?
The information will be available, worst case, January 23rd, which is more than a week before the deliberative session. They're hoping to have it in before them. Um, it's, the problem is with this in particular. They want to make sure that what gets released is accurate and correct. And so it's gotta go through multiple people to make sure it all goes through.
Last year, last year it wasn't.
I don't know what to tell you.
You know, and I had, I had to sit down. I had to sit down at the deliberative session.
Okay, I was not involved with it at that point.
And I was told to shut up and sit down by these holos that were sympathetic for the union.
Okay, I understand.
I'm tired of this stuff.
Okay. I'm presenting you with the information that I have. They are telling you that it will be up on January 23rd, which is over a week before the deliberative, which will give everybody time to review it and go through it at that time.
I would like somebody from the administration to tell me the exact law which allows them to do that.
I don't know what law.
I know you don't know, but the administration, that's what paying them for.
Okay. Anybody else want any input right now? Okay. Um, so we will keep it open for the duration of the meeting. Like I said, if you need anything, just raise your hand and so forth. All right. Um, do we have any announcements? Are you ready? All right, um, let's start with this on your financials. Um, get right into the budget discussion.
Good evening. Um, in your board pack, we have your.
One second.
Your microphone, yeah.
Can you name it?
Yeah.
In your board pack, you received the financials for the current month, the expenses in the previous month. In the previous month, we spent an additional $27,043. And most of that was the addition of one new employee or employee added to the health plan. Um, that has an amazing budgeted expense right now of $111,110. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I do not, dear.
You really can't be very bad here.
Pull the microphone a little bit closer. For some reason, the sound is.
I let them know that in their board pack, they have received financial information that the additional $27,043 was spent this last month. And that there's a remaining budget amount of $111,110.
Actually, I do have a question. Um, so we had this discussion before about the roof and possibly using the excess funds right now. How are we looking with that?
So there should have been a purchase order put in for the roof. So the roof is encumbered in this budget. So that remaining $111,000 includes the encumbered monies already for that.
Okay, so with the roof, we still have $111,000?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? All right, um, why don't... So does that include the financial update as well?
That is financial.
All right, so why don't you go ahead with your question presentation?
All right. So there were no changes at all from when we presented the budget back at the December meeting. Uh, so what I'm gonna do tonight is just go through the, um, the dollar amounts for the current budget that we have this year, fiscal year '24, and our proposed budget for next year. And the increases, I don't have any information, as you know, on the CBA increases and the contracts. I have not seen those at all either. So I can't speak on that if there are questions on that. And then.
Still speak up, please.
Yes. Yeah, we'll do that. Um, my name is Andy Herron. Uh, I'm the chair on that $1 road in East Kingston.
My name is Kirsten Sorogo. I live at 68 DePaul Road in East Kingston.
My name is Brandon French. I'm the principal here.
Good evening. Dr. Renee Bennett, I'm the superintendent deputized for East Kingston. Is this better? Does this sound better?
Yes.
I'm Michelle Larson. I'm the assistant director of finance and operations for the SAU.
Thank you. All right, so I'll kind of start from here. I'm gonna go over the, um, the numbers for our current budget and then again for our proposed budget of fiscal year '25. Uh, the increases in those areas, I do not have any information on any of the CBA information. And then once we get to the default budget, I'm gonna ask Michelle Larson to talk more about that. So we started this year, fiscal year '24, with a budget of $3,415,429. And our proposed budget, fiscal year '25? Thank you, thank you. Uh, our proposed budget for this, I'm sorry, for next year would be $3,558,581 for an increase of $143, I'm sorry, $143,152 for an increase for just the operating budget of a 4.19% increase. Uh, the CBA, uh, you'll see below that is, um, $111,852. So for a total increase between the CBA and the operating budget of $255,005.2 for a total increase of 7.47%. Uh, the major changes, uh, we haven't really added anything to this budget other than, uh, increase, increases in, um, uh, required, uh, increases like special education, uh, benefits like retirement health insurance, uh, increases at the superintendent's office, uh, the office of the principal. Uh, some of those increases there are part of the special and also like psychoTE speech. Uh, anything special education is a required increase that we need for students that currently attend East Kingston. And you also see some of those in food services, increases, transportation. Those are all contract services that again, we do not have any control over. Uh, I just wanna just highlight in all some areas where we've known that there would be increases, but we're doing our best to, um, create funds, uh, using grant money to offset some of these costs. An example is, we were recipients of a $25,000 grant that is going to help us and our students purchase the furniture for our building, which includes tables, some desks, uh, and chairs for most of our students. Our current furniture is extremely old. I mean, I'm talking 20, 30 years old. And, um, it was not comfortably fitting our current students. So, uh, two of our staff members, our occupational therapist, can we do so? And school counselor Paige Tool, uh, got a grant and we were recipients of that grant, $25,000. So our furniture line for next year is $1. And I'm gonna include our computer services, anything technology related. Uh, we were given, um, a donation a couple of years ago that we've been extremely carefully using, only when needed, to purchase computers and technology for our students. So between our tech line and our furniture line, which usually is larger costs, uh, both of those lines are at the dollar. And, um, some of our other services, uh, that you will see decreases in, uh, with regular education, guidance services, media services, we've shown decreases there. So again, most of our increases are either contract related or, uh, CBA related. We have not added any positions to our budget for next year. Uh, we are, you know, just like everyone else, taking into account the rises in inflation. So we had to make some small increases with things like materials and supplies, um, things like maintenance, where we know the costs are continuing to go up. Any questions on the major changes?
I can answer a question. Um, sorry. Um, I have a question about food services. Um, in understanding that we charge or have reduced lunch based on income coming in, what is the cost or what cost do we absorb because people aren't paying for food? Like if their child is getting hot lunch or receiving meals and end up having to be billed at the end of the year, how much of that cost are we absorbing at the end?
So there's two pieces to that. So there are parents who, for whatever reason, are unable, are unwilling to pay, that we do have a loss at the end of the year. Do you happen to know, I don't know off the top of my head how much that is. Um, we also have, we've determined, the board determines a price for the meal for the students for the year. Now, as food costs go up and, you know, freezer breaks or oven breaks and we have more expenses, we can also have a loss which is higher than the difference between what the parents pay and what the federal government reimburses for us. So there's two pieces to each loss. Um, I can find out what the total was for you last year and let you know that.
Yeah, I would like to know because I think the, of course, um, we wanna be able to supply and have equity for all of the kids to make sure that they're fed correctly. But parents who are unwilling to pay, that has another inclination for me. So I would like to know on that breakdown.
Okay, I can get that for you. Thank you.
Ted Lloyd, who's losing his voice from Pine Wood Road. Brandon, when you were talking about some of the things that you've been able to cut back because of grants, my question for you and the rest of the people here, um, when that grant money is paid, does that now obligate us to continue spending out of tax funds for the items that you were using grant money for?
As far as the furniture goes, I mean, we're hoping to have this furniture for the next, I don't know, 30 years. So, um, some of our grant money that we receive goes towards professional development for, uh, for our staff. Uh, so we kind of pinhole certain funds, using Title II funds off of the federal government for special, for special education, excuse me, for professional development. Uh, we can also purchase other technologies that we cannot either afford within our budget or using that donation using, uh, Title IV funds from the federal government. So it really depends on the grant and what the stipulations are for that grant. The Promising Futures Grant, which is where we purchased the furniture from, that's a one-time thing. We have to spend this money by the end of this year, which we're in the process of doing now.
Okay, so the answer is some yes, maybe, but most not?
Most not, yes.
Um, my comment that I wanna make in general is, uh, when you started the presentation, you said you started with the current year's budget. Um, that means to me that you're not doing anything like zero-based budgeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Having a budget that, including your collective bargaining agreement that you've tentatively approved, uh, having a budget of 7.5% increase on top of previous year's increases and on top of the current economic climate in this country, which has seen prices rise by as much as 13% and continuing to rise at a much lower rate. But there's, we're not getting that money back. People's incomes are being stressed to the extreme. I've heard people talk in town that they're not gonna be able to stay here anymore because they can't afford the property taxes. I don't get the sense that the board has looked at ways to accomplish your objectives without spending as much as you spend. And I've got to encourage you to, before the deliberative session, go and look one more time at this budget and try and come up with a way to do something less than 7.5%. Um, I'm afraid it's going to get voting down. Now, I haven't had a chance to look at the default budget, but it probably is not a whole lot different. The problem is that people can't afford what our educational system is spending. And I need you folks to look at that and to find ways. I worked in, in, um, industry for my entire career. I was faced with requirement, uh, five years running, that I was told my budget had to be cut by 5% one year, 10% another year. I had to cut staff by 20% in a third of those years. And we found ways to make it work. This was the Gillette Company, which, uh, as you know, is a very successful enterprise, now part of Procter &amp; Gamble, but I retired before that happened. Um, we were able to make it through tough economic times because we were looking for ways to do more with less. I do not see that attitude in this board. I do not see that attitude in the SAU. We need to look at things, otherwise we're gonna be facing an increased outflow of customers. They're gonna walk away from your product. And they're already doing it, but they're gonna do it more each time the taxes go up. A little bit of time. Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Ted. Yeah, please go next. No, 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 Ted.
Hi, my name's Jender. I'm from 128 Giles Road. My name's Jender. I'm from 128 Giles Road.
If you talk into the microphone, we can hear you. If you talk.
My name is Jender. I am from 128 Giles Road, East Kingston, New Hampshire. Um, I just have a question. So I know, um, Mr. Lloyd covered a couple of different points about the economic climate, the, um, the rate of change in the budget being 7% and inflation being 13%. Sorry, so the rate of change in the budget being around 7%, the rate of inflation being around 13%. So in my mind, I feel like that's actually conservative budgeting. So I don't know if anyone can speak to that. Um, and also, I just have a question about the line, um, the very last line, the regular education budget, um, that's negative $87,000. And I just didn't know what went into that, part of the budget went into that line. I don't know, um, just about salaries or positions that were applied or... I just wanted a little more information about that. And, um, I do think we need to be careful when we're comparing schools to private corporate businesses. Um, I think that's a really slippery slope. A school is not a product, it's a service. Um, and if we're pulling our funds away from a service that supports educating kids, we're not gonna get any more engineers in the country. So I just wanted to leave that out there.
Can I respond to the comment?
Uh, real quick, um, she had a question on the two line items.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead and deal with that.
Yeah.
We didn't cut any teachers. This is based on teachers that we had originally budgeted for this school year that resigned after, um, the vote in March. So they were very tendered teachers that are no longer here. And we replaced them with not-so-tendered teachers. So after that difference comes in.
Okay. And then, um... Okay, sorry.
Thank you. There were two comments made pertaining to the comments that I had made. I wanna address each of those. Um, the first one was that in an era of 13% inflation, a 7.5% budget is a bargain. Um, I have to say that your money sources, your funding, comes from people who do not get a 13% raise when inflation is 13%. They don't even get a 7% raise. The comments that I made, that people are going to be forced out of this talent, are valid. People's salaries, people's income is not increasing. That's why they're suffering from inflation.
Social Security.
Second, uh, the comment of not comparing corporate activity to educational activity. There have been a number of studies done of the impact of spending more money on education and the results that you get from that. And most of the studies that I have looked at have stated very clearly that there's no correlation between increasing money on education and the improved performance of that educational system. We have among the highest expenditures of money on education in this country. And yet, we have consistently dropped in global ratings of education. That is something that you folks need to be looking at and doing something about. There is not a correlation between spending more and getting better results. Okay? So my comments that corporations, particularly the one that I work for, had the ability to respond to environmental and, uh, competitive charges by working smarter, not spending more money. That's all I'm asking you folks to do. Work smarter, not saying, oh, well, inflation's up, so I guess I've gotta increase my budget. That's not, that's a reason to decrease your budget. Okay? Thank you.
Ron Morello, 61 South Road, 69 South Road, kindergarten road here. I got a 3.2% raise this year along with the other senior citizens in this room. Okay? You know, that doesn't keep up with what's going on, as Ted stated. Uh, I wanted to get some data that we can maybe talk about. What are the total number of students we've got now?
Currently, it's 118.
And how many classes for each grade, like kindergarten, school, fifth grade, how many?
Total classrooms?
Yeah.
There's nine.
Can you give me by each one, like how many K? K first, second, third, fourth, fifth?
I'll have to go, I'll have to look it up.
Okay. Now, if you ask how many teachers per, how many, like, just give me, how many teachers do we have right now?
There's nine classroom teachers.
And the special ed, how many students we have there?
Uh, 35 and, uh, three preschoolers.
And how many special ed teachers do anyone, like, of those nine, do both or?
Uh, no, there's two, uh, two special ed teachers. Uh, they're full-time. Uh, one speech pathologist, that is full-time. Our occupational therapist works three days a week. Uh, our, um, physical therapist works two hours a week.
Well, you have an A's too. How many total?
We had budgeted for nine and we have been only able to fill eight.
So I guess, I'm along with Ted, like, what have you guys got to try to keep? Keep the budget as low as possible. We got 118 divided into, somebody could, while I'm up here, divide that into the 3.5 million. What does that come out to? Cost per student? Anybody got a calculator? Or do I have to do it? So 3,558,586 divided by 118. 29,000. 29,000.
29,000.
Yeah, so what is it?
It's about 29,000.
Oh, yeah, 29,000. That's gone up by the way. So what we have here basically is a private school. If you looked at home, if, we don't know. Your job is not to make sure we can keep teachers employed and aides employed. Your job is to provide an adequate education. And an adequate education, we don't need to spend $29,000. That's crazy. That is totally out of control and this number's gone up every year.
One thing to note, if you compare it to a private school, private schools are not required to accommodate special education. We are. Transportation, transportation.
I understand that.
So it's...
What I'm getting at is, I think we're overstaffed, quite frankly. You have too many teachers. And you need to look at that, like Ted said, you need to look at your staffing. You just can't every year say, we're gonna keep these people employed. If you need to combine classrooms, if you've got, you know, the state says, what, 25 students per class? I mean, typically, I've seen one, I've looked at the past, you've got eight or nine kids that are old. That's ridiculous.
Private schools don't have that lower.
So I can respond to that. We...
So I, I can respond to that. We, we can't, at this point in time, lose sight of COVID and what our current third, fourth, and fifth graders went through for two and a half years. Every single, every single one of us in here knows what was lost, especially with our third, fourth, and fifth grade students. They, the, the foundation of education that they were supposed to start their life with didn't happen for two years. They were either not in school, they were remote, or they were learning at an individual desk with a mask on. So we think about those kids because they're the most important people in this building. And everything that we do and that I do as the administrator here is for our one hundred and eighteen students. And we're not going to lose sight of that in this building. We need to keep moving forward and keep looking them forward because they lost so much during those first two years of, of their kindergarten, first years. And if you look at our current data, not just here, but if you look at our current data across the S E U, across the state, probably across the country, you're going to see that our current third, fourth, and fifth graders are performing lower than where they should be or where they have in the past. So to accommodate that, we have specifically this year for third and fourth grade, we have given them smaller class sizes of eleven or twelve students or whatever is in those classrooms because they need it. We, we, we look at class sizes, we look at the makeup of classes. It is, it is a, a multi-week job that our classroom teachers go through to put our students in the best situation that they're going to be able to succeed. And we can't lose sight of that. And I know, I know money is, is kind of trumps everything, but we can't forget those kids because they were, they were forgotten for two years. So please think of that because it's something we think about all the time.
And I'd like to note that, that it's working. If you look at the data that's coming back from these students, the graphs that we see on a regular basis, the teachers in the background here, presented at the, at monthly meetings on a regular basis, you can see that kids are coming out of the underperforming category and moving into the, what was the correct word?
Proficiency.
Efficiency?
Proficient.
Proficient, sorry, category. We're seeing that constantly expanding. And we're also seeing the overachieving expanding a little bit. But the biggest gap that we're seeing is we have a large number of kids that were underperforming that are now coming up and being proficient. And so this is, this is working, specifically those third, fourth, and fifth graders. You, you can also see that kindergarten, first and second are performing very well just by themselves, as that's their doing. I also like to say, I think we've got one teacher in those grades that are getting great jobs as well. But yes, what Brandon said, those third, fourth, and fifth graders needed a boost, and we've, we've got those through. Future budgets, you know, as they move out, you know, there's discussions there with the incoming board that we're going to have, but.
Can I?
Yeah.
And I, I also want to, I also want to highlight that we, we, we listened to the community about academics and the focus getting back to academics. And again, we, we have done that. Our reading specialist was added, this is her third year. We added math interventionist two years ago. Our current K through three teachers were all Gillingham trained science of reading. So when we're talking about the improved proficiency in our K through two students, is a direct result of their efforts of improving their craft, attending week-long trainings, and modified trainings throughout to improve the reading scores of our students and the proficiency of our students. So everything that we've done the last couple of years is exactly what our community wanted us to do, was to get the focus back on academics. And we've done that. And we've said it, it's going to take five-plus years for us to see this throughout our school due to COVID. And we're getting back there. So our current K, our third two students, they're getting exactly what they need. Our three, fourth, and fives, they're getting what they need and then some because of what happened to you, uh, three years ago.
Nancy, our eleven country lane. You said that the five thirty, thirty-five students have special needs of some kind. Do you not find that a large toll in a small population? And if so, have you looked into why it may be an anomaly?
Uh, yes, it is large. It is larger than we are hoping for. Part of it, and this is, and this is, this is the small part, right? There's COVID, which we know about. But for many years prior to me, starting here four years ago, we didn't have interventions in this building. None. When I started here, there was not one math or reading intervention that's not staff here. And that is a need because those students were, were basically going right from the classroom to special ed without any interventions in between. In addition to that, the last, this year, two, three years planning, we have totally turned over how we provide interventions to our students through the MTSS multi-tiered system of supports that we've talked extensively about for the past three years. First year was completely planning and training and our tier one team spending a whole year planning on how we wanted it to look for years two and three. This year, for the first time, we've totally revamped our MTSS two and three team with creating a whole new way to provide intervention to our students. Our team meets weekly on Thursdays. Our team includes the classroom teacher, then maybe referring a student, the school counselor, reading specialist, math interventionist, OTPT, special educators, the whole special ed team in addition to a couple others, to discuss students at length on what the students need. Our students are progress monitored frequently by our interventionists. And then we come back to the table in sixty weeks to see if, is the progress working, I'm sorry, is the intervention working? If not, why not? And what can we do to remedy that? If it's working, then we're going, we're going to continue the interventions because we're looking for what our students need. If it's not working, then we can change course for another sixty-eight weeks and either change interventions, tweak it a little bit for whatever the student needs. Then if we get to that point where we see the student is not making any progress after six to eight weeks of intervention, then another six to eight weeks after that, or we're seeing something, the classroom teacher's seeing something going on in the classroom where the interventionist throughout their intervention process, then we may come together with the team and the parents to refer students to special ed. So our hope is to decrease that percentage based on the staff that we've had over the last few years and the new way we provide interventions to our students that need it. So you?
So to tie that back into the budget, those are the type of things that are happening at the school. You've, you've seen up there, that top line, that's special education, right? We are utilizing more of our teachers to get ahead of that number as the kids are moving through the system, to take that ratio of thirty-five to one eighteen down. And so as kids are moving through, hopefully, we're not going to have that same ratio because the support services are there with the standard teachers and so forth. And so that is the type of stuff that is being worked upon for these kids. And hopefully, it'll work through, which will wear and end up in the end, and we don't have to do any special ed education needs. So.
Going back to, um, I just lost my drink, pardon, sorry.
When it comes back to you, let's, uh, I mean, you had your hair done first, and then you two. You, you two decide, you, you want to go next.
I'm on the trusty, the trust funds with Ted Lloyd.
Okay.
Robie Day. If I recall, two years ago, we disbanded the building fund, and we gave you, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand for maintenance, twenty-five thousand for retirement, and I believe it was two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand. The balance was for special ed. Are you drawing from those funds? Because we certainly haven't had any, anybody approach us that you want to take some of that money versus the taxpayers?
We've tried to keep it within the budget. I, I personally see those as a rainy day emergency type things, specifically, um, special education.
It's, it's rainy, it's raining, I don't have a value.
Specifically, specifically, one of them was special education. There was, um, it is, what's the correct word? A student in the past that we needed transportation for that kicked us way out of budget. And that would, it's where if we were constantly drawing down on special education, that would encumber a huge financial burden on us, those type of things. If we had two of those, we would drop down that fund very quickly by itself.
The other thing is you have a sergeant fund too, which I forget how much is left as well.
Yeah, that sergeant fund, so.
And you're going to spend that in any way you want.
Yeah, if you go back and you, you listen to our previous board meeting for the major things that we were discussing on how we're going to move forward with the roof, it is either sergeant fund.
Or the maintenance.
Or the maintenance fund.
Okay.
Right now, it's in a budgeted line item. We, we have it in budget, but we are still, and it'll probably be on the next meeting, where we will decide whether or not we will utilize the funds for that. We've, we've voted on making that accessible, if, if that's the correct word.
Yeah.
Um, and so you may see that come through.
Okay.
Right, right now, it's within budget, but that was some of the discussion that we were having of, we could draw on those funds and essentially return that to taxpayers of that eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, don't forget to look at those things. We've got them for you, so.
Yeah.
They're available.
Yeah, so.
And I would say, I believe last year, we did access the special ed trust fund for about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And just for the citizens to know, if one student moved in and required an out-of-district placement, that's two hundred thousand dollars a year, which is why boards typically keep those trust funds secure because we don't, it happened in another town in S E U where a lovely student that required a lot of special ed program, and if they didn't have their trust fund, they would not be able to program for that kid. So when you think about special ed trust fund, a student could walk through a door tomorrow, and we are legally required to provide them with that level of service. And then we do not budget for an out-of-district placement. We keep that in the special ed trust fund to cover that cost in transportation. But last year, we did, we did tap it in, we had it closer to the end of the year, is when the board will ask for the final.
Yeah.
And we've had a lot of wonderful facilities issues in this building this year. So it is a conversation, we've talked about the facilities trust fund or the sergeants' trust fund for the budget, the boiler, and everything else that happens.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see you use that for those things because those are, you know, once in a great while expenditure that can, that can impact the taxes significantly.
Yeah. And that's, if you go back and, you, you don't need to, but that is a discussion that we had in the previous two board meetings, is about whether or not we're going to, right, right now, it's within our budget, but it seems like, especially the roof, is a perfect opportunity to dip in one of those trust funds and essentially return that money back to the taxpayers.
All right, thank you. Lloyd, you, you said I could miss.
On Robie Day, two blue hair in court, and this is not a trust and trusty meeting.
No, three, yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay. Now, I'm a little confused, but that's, that's been the case for a long time. The big, big number that jumped out at me immediately was the special education increase of five thousand. So what's all that about? So I looked at your budget review here. Ninety-one thousand of that is the bulk of that on nine, five thousand. And that is earmarked for salaries of special education aides. Now, have you hired more aides or have you just jacked up the aides' salaries? Simple question.
Hi, Robie and everyone. If you, if you look at the regular ed aides, depending upon the need within the school, the aides that we have can be used as a regular ed aide or a special ed aide. Next year, the determination is, is we need them more as special ed aides. So if you look at the eleven, eleven hundred, five oh one one eight account for next year in the proposed budget, you'll see it drop significantly while the special ed aides increase. It's just because we're repositioning them.
Wait a minute.
What do you mean?
Five, five oh one one eight. That's the line item that says it's ninety-one thousand and an increase?
Yes, it, for the eleven one two one oh account. Now, if you look on the first page for eleven, eleven hundred, which is regular ed, five oh one one eight, you're going to see a decrease of sixty-two thousand, eight sixty-three.
Right.
So all it is is we've taken the regular ed aides, given them their raise for next year, and moved them to special ed services. It's just a swap.
All right.
I just need to fire the page. Now, I'm not spoken.
You, you raised your hand.
Well, I did. I had a question.
And then, stop.
Not giving to teaching and kids and all that stuff. But CBA increase is one hundred and eleven thousand, sorry, Sharon Day, two blue hair in court. Is that a lot into concrete? They, the increase of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, is that contract law?
That is the upcoming contract that will be voted upon.
Okay, now is that the NEA or is it some different kind of contract?
It is the NEA, and it's the collective bargaining agreement. It is a separate warrant article outside of the budget that you would see on voting day.
And, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that as well.
Okay, because that's, you want to talk about rainy day, that's a heck of a hump of change there. I just, I've got a master's degree in education. I spent twenty years in education, and it's amazing to me how much power the NEA has and how it drives school budgets. And that's my one comment.
Well, quick question. He's a little Lloyd from Pinewood's role. Can you explain what a mentor sal, what mentor salary is on?
Okay. Anytime the students, students, geez. Anytime a new teacher begins in our school, we provide a mentor for them to get educated to our building, the S E U. Our current teachers that are in-house provide the mentorship for our new teachers, and they receive a stipend. Their work that they do is outside of their contracted hours, so that they receive a stipend to mentor their new colleagues in our building.
Hopefully, nobody jumped in front of this.
The one poll came back on, you said that you had a lot of data since COVID, which shows the kids have improved a lot. Where do we find that? How do we get hold of it?
There's a statement on the state website, you can see all schools in the whole state.
Yeah, but we've also had a number of presentations in previous board meetings with what I was referencing.
About on the website?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, in, in the meantime, I would encourage everybody to go back and see some of the presentations that the teachers have done over the past number of months. It's been very enlightening about what they're doing at school.
But are you facts about these mentors? If they're doing outside of their working hours, how are they mentoring the people? Are, are the other people, the new teachers, are they working later hours in order to? Are the other people, the new teachers, are they working later hours in order to be mentored? So they get paid extra for staying later so that the mentors can teach them what they need to do?
Just the mentor.
Just the mentor?
Yeah.
Not the person?
Not the new teacher, just the mentor.
I don't understand how this is out after hours, after the contracted hours. If you're mentoring somebody, usually you're with them. So that would be during the school day, that wouldn't be after hours.
If they were together during the school day, then that would take away from the students. So everything they do with their mentors is when they're not with students. Our teachers minus their lunch and their prep are with students. So to take students away, sorry, to take staff away from students multiple times a month for the mentorship, the students would be at a loss. Now, there are times where our mentors will go observe our new teacher, provide feedback on a lesson. That happens during the school day, and we will find coverage, but that happens just a couple times a year. The rest of the work they do is outside of the contracted hour.
Are you asking, like, the new teacher benefits from the mentor relationships? So they're willing, they do stay after. It's just how do we recruit veteran teachers to spend their time? Would the new teachers, we pay them for that time? So they are together after hours, but only the mentor gets the time.
One, hopefully, last item of confusion in my brain was great about the special education going up a hundred and five thousand and the regular education going down, almost dating eight thousand dollars. Brendan, you mentioned third, fourth, and fifth graders have been a focus. And is that current third, fourth, and fifth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So the budget that we're talking about here, what we're talking about the fourth and fifth, new fourth and fifth graders, because they've all moved up here. So in essence, we should have, all things being equal, I should have expected a one-third cut because one of the grades has moved on. And I'm not seeing that. I'm seeing the net between these two is seventeen thousand dollars up. Am I seeing these numbers wrong?
Cutting a third of our budget based on students.
No, 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 no. You gave third, fourth, and fifth graders as a reason for why we're up a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah.
And then it came out that we're not really up a hundred and five thousand because one of the line items is washed with the regular education line item correspondence. So the major changes, we've got plus one oh five and minus eighty-eight. So that's still up, net up. And having lost two-thirds, excuse me, having lost one-third of your target special ed people who suffered during COVID, I would have expected it to go down.
When he talked about the support of third, fourth, and fifth, he was not just speaking about special education. There's not a third of students with IEPs leaving the building next year. That's the fallacy in the theory. He meant he kept classes small because these kids required makeup from education loss during COVID. That was outside of special ed. We have students on IEPs in third, fourth, and fifth. There is not a third of IEPs leaving the building next year.
Okay. Maybe I misheard. I thought the fact third, fourth, and fifth graders need special attention came up as a result of talking about thirty-five special ed people.
Yeah, they're not all in fifth grade. And it was our current third, fourth, and especially our current third and fourth, or in kindergarten, first grade during the first two years of COVID.
Yeah.
And how much they lost out on that. So it was more in reference to our current third and fourth graders with smaller class sizes to give them more individualized attention, not even focusing on students with IEPs. They're getting what they need through their IEP. But our current third and fourth graders, through intervention, through small group and individual sessions with their classroom teacher, is what I was referencing with those students in particular.
Which budget line items would I be looking at for those intervention?
It would be regular education, regular education teachers.
Okay, just regular salaries.
Yeah, so it may have gotten somewhat glossed over, but when he was discussing the changes that they're making with MTSS and so forth, that is getting the regular classroom teacher and aides in there, starting with kids so they don't have to get into IEPs in the first place. But because that's a new system, we have a larger number out there right now. And so hopefully, as that moves forward, we're going to see less of the special intervention that we've gotten over here.
Thank you, I was truly confused.
Do we have any other comments this time? Okay, once again, as we're going, if there's questions, please feel free. I guess, Brendan, finish your.
I'm going to click on default. So kind of the school warrant, warrant number one includes a default number. Now, we're given some pretty specific requirements on what can and cannot be included in the default. So you'll see in the paperwork that we have handed out how we calculated the default so that there would be no precedence. So certain items are considered mandatory. So special ed is mandatory. The SAU assessment is mandatory. If there's an active CBA still, you know, being followed, that would be considered mandatory. So this is what we have included or not included. So we took the budget, the proposed budget that we've calculated, and we are not allowed to include in the default non-union salary increases, non-union health insurance increases, supplies, equipment, operational expenses like maintenance, transportation, food service, and then we have a small amount of follow-up. So we were just wanting to let you know how that default was calculated. So anyone have any questions?
Yeah, could you just explain that again, please?
Yep. So we can only include certain items from the proposed budget in the default number. So we're not allowed to include non-salary, anything that has to do with non-union people that aren't part of a CBA. We cannot include that in the default number that you vote on. Now, in this proposed budget, the teacher's CBA is up for vote. So the teachers are already in your proposed budget at their current year levels. None of their increases or raises or anything are included in your proposed budget. So those are already not included. So supplies, maintenance items and things like that are also, any increases for those in the proposed budget, we're not allowed to include in the default budget. Transportation, so the increases for the first student and the special ed transportation buses, we can also not include. And food service, we're not allowed to include any increases from that either.
So they can't be included in the default budget?
Correct.
But they are included in the regular budget?
In the proposed budget.
In the proposed budget.
Yes. So what we need to provide to you on that warrant is what we're proposing. And then if you don't agree with that proposed budget, it will go to the default budget.
Plus all the things that are not included in the default budget.
No, so when you vote on Article One, you're either going to pass it for the three million, five, five, eight, or if you say no, it kicks to the default of three, five, one, two.
Three, five, one, two, plus all the things that are not included?
No, Nancy, then you don't get, if you go to the default, that gets passed, and you don't get this included. That's what they have to cut.
Or we have to find a way to make things work on the default numbers.
I'm confused again. Normally, in a budget presentation, I think I have seen defaults presented, starting with the previous year's or the current year's budget, and then adding to it any things in the new budget that are mandatory. You've done this exactly backwards from what normally has been done. Is there a reason for that?
No, we're just trying to show you what items in your proposed budget we can include.
Yeah. Okay. Just curious, it's the first time, I've been here twenty years, and got school, we've got town, we've got the SAU, and it's always been the way that I first explained it.
Caramello, does it run? I'm just curious, how do you find out how much per household that difference makes? Like, how much per household would you have to shell out for that increase? Is there anybody that, I don't, I can, I'm just curious?
So all we can do to give you an estimate of what the increases would be per household is to use what we call the tax card, which you can go to town and you can ask them. But the tax card will give you what all of our residences are valued at for this year. So what they do is they take four hundred million dollars worth of property in the town, and then they take the funds that they need to raise and pay, and they divide that into their property valuation. There's a whole calculation. So what we do is, we don't know what next year's valuation will be. All we can do is give you an estimate using this year's valuation of property. So we take the increases that we see in these budgets, we divide it by the property valuation, and then we multiply it by a thousand because everything's valued at thousands. And then we can give you an estimate on what those increases will cost you.
Well, is it possible to do an estimation based on a hundred thousand dollars? Let's say you can kind of figure it out yourself based on the price of your house.
So actually, on some of the.
Twenty-eight for a thousand, yeah, that's a pretty good story. Whatever the valuation. All's are sixty-four cents.
Sixty-four cents per thousand.
So on the papers that I had handed out, we list the town valuation here. And then what we did is we said that we showed the increases for the operating budget, the CBA, and the total. And it came out for the operating budget, it's approximated at thirty-six cents per thousand. So you could take your property valuation at four hundred thousand dollars, multiply it by thirty-six cents. If the property's three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, all you have to do is multiply it by that thirty-six cents.
If you look at your tax bill, it'll say what your valuation.
Correct.
That's how they, that's how they give you.
And we gave the same tax impact for the CBA of twenty-eight cents per option. So we both pass. Correct.
But that's just these things. That does not include the cost of the co-op.
All right. Is that the next slide? Okay, so you're done?
We're done.
Okay. So one thing I would like to point out, you guys all have the paper showing the warrant articles, correct? You made a reference to the teacher's contract for the supplement here. If you take a look at warrant article two, and not just look at this year, but then look at the years in the future. So next year, it's a thirty-four thousand, which is the estimated for all the teachers. That's what the raises will be total. And then a little over sixty, somewhere between sixty and sixty-five thousand for the next two years after that. What this contract does is it took the, if you've seen the previous contracts, there's a grid for years of service and so forth. We took that grid and we bumped up the base. But we also, the grid used to be a four-point-seven percent increase all the way down. Four-point-seven or four-point-five, after English one? It was somewhere in there. It's now three-point-seven. And then on top of that, we're incentivizing continuing education for the teachers. So as they get more classes, go up and get a master's and so forth, they move over to homes, and they get a percentage raise for that. So we bumped up the base to be more competitive. And when I say more competitive, we're right in the middle of towns like Kensington and New Fields. Okay? We are not, we are below Exeter, we're below Stratton at the base of our salary. At the top end, there's a mix. Kensington's higher than us. I think New Fields is a little bit lower than us, if I remember correctly. So we're kind of right in the middle on the top end as well. So we really are grouped outward, we should be with respect to comparable towns within our SAU system. But there's incentive now to, and our teachers are phenomenal at this, continuing education, being up to the date of the latest, and so they can help move these students along. And so that, on top, there's a couple things. That is why you're seeing the bump this year, is we took that table and we moved it up. But when you look at the subsequent years, that's why you're not seeing that same bump each time. It is more stable moving forward. So that's kind of my spiel on what the CBA is about right now. We were, our lower end was low, it was too low. We weren't competitive. And we are hiring new, younger teachers, and we need to be competitive about that.
Thanks, Andy, that was very helpful. The only question I raised as I went on is, how many other collective bargaining agreements do we have? Is everything covered by this? Is everything covered by this?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, within the school.
Yeah, within the school.
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Like I said, I'm, um, I, I, that contract, I'm told it will be up on the twenty-third. By the, by the twenty-third, so, please. Yes?
Quick question. If the voters vote down Article Two, perhaps?
We go back to their current contract, um, which had a, a COLA. Oh, they stay where they are. Teachers get raises. Which, um, I just, let me finish Pete, but yeah. Teachers are seeing the same inflation everybody else is.
Yeah, so when's the last time teachers got raises? And what is the median teacher's salary right now?
Uh, the median within the school? I don't know off the top of my head. But it, but every year they have, um, every year they do have a COLA and they, they do. The current contract had a, had a raise, don't have it. We just restructured how it operates. There was, I believe there was one year where it didn't pass, where they didn't get a raise. But that was
Pete Durvan, one-twenty Giles Road, East Kingston, United States, New Hampshire, Solar System, Universe. Anything else? Take a picture, take a picture.
We don't need that.
So was there a, um, was there a year when they did get a raise? And what has been, like, the CAGR, the, on an annual basis, what has been the raise under the current contract? And what's the CAGR under this next contract?
CAGR? Uh, COLA?
Annual, yeah, right, compound annual growth rate. So on average, what's the increase every year?
Uh, what was the existent on, do you remember?
So the average raise for which year? This year, very high now?
I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Like, if you, if you look at this over the, the three years, like, the base is high, so the increase might be higher this year, and it's X percent. But if you, if you average the raise over the course of the contract, my guess is the percentage is going to be lower. The percentage raise here over here?
The percentage, so that's one, one thing in this, um, uh, in this new contract is actually the percentage raise is flat across the board now. There was some funny games that would happen, is, is you got, um, two years, ten and eleven, I believe it was, where we changed the percentage that you would get for being here another year. That's on, it's all flat across the board. Moving over to columns, um, it's, I think, two percent, and then it goes to three and a half percent as you move further over in the columns. Um, and then each year, the grid increases by one and a half percent. Okay. Okay. So, and I believe previously it was one, do you remember?
The COLA?
Oh, yeah.
Carol?
Yeah.
So we're talking about our present, uh, the, the, uh, COLA?
What was the, what was the COLA on the previous contract? I don't have it in front of me.
The previous contract?
Yeah.
The current one you're on now, it was like one, two, one.
It was one point five?
Oh, yeah, maybe one point five.
Okay.
Yes, it was a two, one point five, one point five.
Yeah.
Did you get the step increases above that, right?
Yes, you get the step, so that, the, the step increases are, are, were four, five, um, until you got into the later years of their three seven now across the board.
So in twenty twenty, um, our contracts didn't pass, so we moved nowhere. A few contracts prior to that, the teachers fully understood the difficulties of the community, and we negotiated a zero percent increase for one year and a one point seven five for the other year. One, one contract negotiations we had, um, for a three-year contract, we ended up with a three percent increase for three years. Shocked, couldn't believe we actually got that. Um, since then, our percent increases have been somewhere between two percent to one point five percent. And that's COLA. That's COLA. We know that COLA is a lot higher than one point five percent. The grid was actually very inequitable in, in the, um, point that, as Andy was saying, that the more experience that you had as a teacher, you were rewarded less. In fact, you're rewarded half the amount that the most inexperienced teachers were rewarded. And when you went along the contract in terms of when you got, um, you know, increase in, uh, or a greater masters or masters plus more time in, um, I have lots of words right now, like, um, not cags, but a masters plus forty-five, let's say, of credits, you are also rewarded less, the more experience that you've had in the, um, in the former grid. So our purpose this time was to make it equitable. Talk about equity, we want to make it equitable with all the teachers, starting with our youngest teachers to the most experienced staff. And in our former, well, in our, the contract that we are sitting in right now, it was not equitable between the staff members, and that was our purpose. And part of making that equity was to, for our peer to pay Paul, so we lessened the amount of the increase for the step increase to support those senior staff members who have been here between ten to twelve years. So that's part of that bump that you're feeling when you take a look at these numbers, is just to make it equitable for all the teachers to be earning a similar flat rate as they move on through that grid.
So, yeah, so that's the, that's kind of the basis of where we're getting that, that one big number of this upcoming year. Those years that were the, the zero, no contract, it ended up, we were behind on that loading scale, so we, we had to move it up. But we've also made it more stable moving forward. So. Oh, and let's say, adding to the stability comment, or it's also a four-year budget, which, um, again, is adding the stability to this whole process, so.
For your contract.
For your budget.
For your contract, as of what I said.
You said budget.
For your contract, sorry. Anything else? All right. I think that kind of wraps up our budget discussion. Am I missing anything?
Before the meeting, before the meeting ends, we'll need a motion to put the warrant articles or as they are, or if you want to make any edits. Do you want to do that now or?
Let's get it done now. Now, we, we need to get it on.
There's three more articles that were in the board pass. Okay. So if you, if you want to end the show session first, we need to start the next everybody. We have some public input for the budget aside.
I know you started the meeting and you went-
I know usually you have public input for thirty minutes, and then the board meeting starts. Is there one you want to verify?
We keep the public, is that the reading? Do we need to establish the people?
Yeah, you need to have a, a thirty-minute public session just before the budget.
Okay. All right, so is there any more discussion on the budget that anybody in here would like to add? Okay, so I am going to close the public input session with regards to the budget at this time.
Definitely before the meeting starts, you need to make a motion for the warrant articles.
Okay, and so officially, we're starting this board meeting at six twenty-four. And I would like to make a motion to, do I need to do them individually?
I mean, you're, I think, yeah, you, no, I think you say you want to.
I would like to make, make a motion to place all three warrant articles as they currently are on to-
On the ballot?
On the ballot? For the public to vote on?
Yeah. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we need you both to vote on it.
I think, no, I think you're good, so you want the warrant report to deliver that, right?
Okay.
Yes.
That's right. All right, um, so we got into the budget discussion, we did a financial update, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, approval of minutes. I don't have anything, I went through, look at me. All right. Motion, this one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, board committee assignments. Superintendent evaluation, we met, uh, last week? Uh, someone recently. Um, there is going to be a survey coming out to all the boards um, with regards to, uh, uh, the evaluation, and so that's coming on very nicely. Um, hopefully you'll see that survey here shortly. Also on that, um, there was a survey that was sent out to the whole community that is also with regards to Esther's evaluation, making sure that there's communication out to the, the public as well. So, something tied into there. I believe it's closer to our website.
I think it's coming out in January, it has the little-
Oh, did I just get it? Cause-
You might have just done it. There, there will be, if you haven't got the survey, there will be a survey coming out for you to fill out to give feedback to Dr. Esther Asbell. Um, it will be a Q B C code, and then there'll be links, so it will be coming out. I, I think Andy has it because he's on the committee, but I don't think it's been polished yet.
Okay. My apologies.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll try to get that in, like, um, uh, the East Kingson library, so you can get all this in there, so. All right, uh, policy committee, we're gonna bypass that, she's got three policies, but, um, is there any reason we need these passed today?
No, I think, um, Tiffany can go over the next month, she said that was fine.
Okay, good. Uh, safety and security, um, there was no meeting since the last meeting that we had. Wellness.
Uh, we have a wellness meeting on Thursday coming up, so that's January eleventh. It is at eight thirty in the morning at the S A U office. Um, I've asked repeatedly for a Zoom link so that those of us who work can attend. Um, so I'm hoping that I receive that so that I can also attend, um, and I don't have to drive an hour to get to the meeting. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. Um, we will meet two other times, uh, in the spring also. I'm there looking at revamping, just to give you some background, revamping some of the, um, nutrition and food spaces throughout the S A U. So, um, that will happen on January eleventh from eight thirty to ten thirty, and I, that I can give you some links that I can at least be present. Um, as, can I go into community engagement? Okay. Um, for community engagement, we're at, uh, actually meeting, uh, January twenty-second. Um, but there's been some movement on the last few weeks with our committee. We have gained another teacher, so I'm happy to hear that, that there's some, uh, more involvement from our teachers here, uh, in the school. We are looking to, um, revitalize the outdoor classroom in the back, looking to call it the King Fisher Community Park, where we are going to hopefully build, um, some outdoor nature classroom spaces. Um, I've been looking pretty intensely at a number of curriculums, um, that are out there. I've also, um, received a grant from one of our community members who are part of our community engagement. Um, Todd Weber sent, um, a pretty substantial grant, and it's called the New Hampshire Partnership for Schoolyard Actions Grant. The application is due January twenty-sixth. So when I spoke to Principal French about our upcoming meeting, I said that is exactly what we will accomplish on January twenty-second, is to look at up to, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars, um, on how to revitalize out back there and get very intentional and specific as to what our needs and what the school and the community are looking for. Um, I mentioned multiple times that I'm looking for community members outside of the school to be part of this, um, committee, so that we can look at it through a holistic lens rather than a K through five lens. I really am hoping to, um, incorporate S S T. Uh, we are getting a meeting on the books the first week in February-ish with the director of S S T. So our students are in S S T, like general contracting, welding, culinary, architectural design can all be part of this. So we have a multi-generational space. Um, and then we can have career pathways for our fifth, fourth and fifth graders looking at these kiddos who are coming over and actually participating, uh, in the design of this. So it's going to be a pretty large project. Right now, uh, on the twenty-second, my goal is to revamp the, to look at this grant and then have the committee actually write the grant so that we can submit it by the twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Great job. All right, um, let's see, your goal updates, Tiffany's not here. But just to speak on hers, uh, which is academic growth. Brandon, you've been, it's been very nice, the amount of data that you've been providing in the meetings and so forth. All right, uh, you just kind of went over yours, and, um, by the end of March, let's see if we, beginning of March, let's see if we can nail down a five here. Any news business?
I just have a question. Brought up data. Brandon, I was curious as to, um, when are we going to start focusing on math? I know that you've brought, brought it up before. Uh, we've done a lot of work in reading, which has been wonderful. But I, I also think we've seen some dramatic drops in our math scores, so I'm just curious, if not now, in the near future, we could maybe get strategic at what that plan might look like, so we can move kind of forward with that.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, we've, uh, talked, uh, with Jill Zier, our director here, just in the last few weeks, uh, with our teams about, uh, finishing out the year with, uh, the curriculum map that we've been doing in the areas of English Language Arts. And as we look into next year, having more strategic plan, providing more PD, uh, and have our PLC times, more focused on math and more moving in math.
I just, I should probably know this, since my kid is in the school, but, um, the RTI model that you show right now, uh, these kids are going where their needs are being met, right? And then they're reassessed consistently throughout the year. Is that going to be very similar for the math? Just so I can put it on my head, or is that already being done right now?
It's already being done.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the assessments that are, that we're using for I-ready, that's what's driving some of the conversations around where kids are math-wise?
I-ready and C-A-D, once it happened in classrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Any old business? Yeah. Any reason to go into non-public?
I don't know.
Anyone else?
Any questions or anything?
No.
Yep. Um, so the next, uh, item that we have is February third at eight AM is a deliberative.
Eight AM.
We are going before the town. So, um.
Could I ask that if we ask questions at the deliberative session, that the teachers do not shout abuse at us? Because this has happened every time we've spoken in class.
I will, um, pass that word along. And, and, and during the session, I, I will, I will make sure my voice is.
I, I, I need to jump in there. The teachers have never shouted abusive words to any speaker.
You are completely wrong. I'm totally wrong.
Community members have. Teachers have not.
You sit at the front. When we walk to the back, that's when they shout at us. They tell, they tell us to sit down and shut up.
I know exactly who you're talking about, and that person is not a teacher. I can a hundred percent tell you that was not a teacher.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. That's very important for school, though. It was a man, actually. This man was one of the, there was one.
And they cannot work here.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
And we, we will try to keep things civil during the deliberative.
Yes, from both sides.
All, all the way, all, all the way around, yes.
Tim, um, Tim, uh, I look down to New York for, I don't know, thirty-eight years, thirty-seven years. The way they ran their, a little bit of recession, if you were not a resident of that town, they put you down the hall a ways. So they were grouped together. Only residents were allowed to speak as well. And I think that that might go a long way if you ask for a driver's license, an ID or whatever. If you're an East Kingston resident, you'd sit.
Or we do. The supervisor, the checklist, when you went and you get a card.
The way it was last year with the tent outside, you could walk into that tent, no problem at all.
Oh, last year?
That wasn't last year.
I, I'm sorry, I have to speak.
Yeah. Yeah. That are not, that's.
Last, last year we had to check in there.
Yes.
Um, I, I will, I will ask what the procedure is for non-residents, but I can.
They're not, they don't get to speak.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think anybody's allowed to speak. So.
Yeah.
I've been in some of the deliberative sessions that for a non-resident to be even in the room, you know, the, the, uh, body was asked to approve.
Yeah, and I, I actually think that's how we operate as well, but then I, I have to ask Pete.
Who's the moderator?
Pete, it's the, yeah, it's the same one for the town. So the moderator, one of the moderator's job is to make sure that they are a citizen before they speak, so.
Eric Marshall is the moderator for the school.
No.
Yeah.
Pete Durbin. Pete Durbin. Yeah, the same moderator that was that since I've been.
I do have a quick question. Are you talking about, um, second language program, the language, like a year ago, I think. Yeah. Um, a, a Diana, something like that, did?
We had, um, foreign language for, for the fifth grade my first two years and replaced that when we moved to STEAM. Uh, we, we had taken, um, a poll from, from, from parents.
Yeah.
Um, regarding where, where they wanted to move. And it was overwhelmingly towards science, technology, engineering, math in place of foreign language. So this is our second year of STEAM.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, they immediately get, um, foreign language check, no problem.
Yeah, but it's almost a little bit, I mean, test it, you just learn it, you know, young.
Yeah.
Do they have enrichment courses?
Enrichment courses?
Enrichment. I know that some, some schools, Kensington, have enrichment courses, uh, that they have actually after school. Uh, volunteers, and that would be an opportunity to speak foreign language.
Our PTO, um, provides enrichment.
Yeah.
Through, uh, through their organization after school. Uh, foreign languages in one of them right now, they do, they do, I guess, the things for foreign language.
Yeah, that's just if they have the available.
Correct.
Wait, can I also get you down?
Yeah.
All right, um, is there anything else? Good. All right, um, it's six forty-one. I'm gonna call the meeting to an end. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.